Our invocation given by Reverend Mark Davenport from City Light Church. And then we'll pledge allegiance, let's all stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for an opportunity to serve you. Whether it be through civil or through our, our relationship with you as a believer. Lord, I thank you that we get to serve you today. Lord, I pray now for this meeting. Lord, as we've watched the news and we've seen things going on in other countries. Lord, we find such an honor and privilege to know that we are safe here in our town. That our county is a place where you are loved and adored. And Lord, I thank you for the men and women that serve in these capacities. That make life living in LaGrange just a little better. Lord, I pray for wisdom and guidance as they direct us, as they lead us, and as they direct the, the path of this great city. Lord, I ask that you would give them the wisdom that only you can give. Now, Lord, as we go forward, I pray as, as the city moves in the direction that you would have us, Lord, that, that we would honor you with everything you bless us with. And it's in your wonderful name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much Pastor Davenport. We've all been given copies of the agenda and let us have approval last minute.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Foes by the same sign, ahs have so carry. We have a delegation now coming, Mr. Alonso Roberts and Mr. Fred Manley concerning the Grig Center Pool that will come at this time.
Hello gentlemen.
Hello.
It's been a long time, it's good to see you guys.
We should meet more.
Hello Meg.
Harry.
Yeah. All right. Ms. Olson. I'm here today to really, I'm not fussing today, this is a coming together meeting to deal with some issues in reference to the Grig Center Pool. We want to get some clarity on the teamwork that's going on with, between the city, the county, and maybe, I don't know, some other government entities. I have reached out to the school superintendent, I wanted to talk to him personally about a few things. I know that he has a program that he wants to implement where every third grader learns to swim in Tru County. So, I can't wait to get the details. Maybe you guys already know more than I do about it, but I can't wait to get the details on how that would be fully implemented. But I want to let you know that I did speak with the county commissioners last week and shared some concerns in reference to the community. A lot of community members were not aware that there would not be a pool replaced going into the summer, this summer. And we know that the city is a partner and you guys, guys have contributed to the project over at the pool, at the gym. One of the problems that people are talking about with that is we already had a gym and we're building two more gyms. And there's some argument as to why we couldn't have built one gym and built the pool and maybe bring another court, I'm sorry, court, not gym, in the second phase so that all the kids will have an opportunity to do the things that they love. I really want to know where the city stands on this project. I know it's not your, you're not managing the building. The building is, but you own the building in the city, in the city limits. And the community, thank you for your contribution thus far. And the mayor did say that there will be a spec, a possibility of having to put forth some more funds for this project. What we really want to know is are there current talks going on between the governments to try to bring this pool in? I know the first concern was completing the building with the two gyms and the cost of how everything went up. So where are we with that? And is there any current discussion about how we can get a pool put in place? If there's not, I would say that we build and create kind of like a delegation between the governments. I would assume you all already have that though, where you guys talk and come together and on the different projects. I know some people, you know, there's some, 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 what's the word I want to use? Some, some people are not happy with the rollout of how the commissioners did this project. Some people feel like the commissioners need to complete it on their own and they have given enough. But we need to get some clarity on where we are. And the other thing in, in closing here, the pool served last summer, almost 4,000 kids. Whether we know it or not, that was, I had three kids in the program myself. And I don't have to tell you how many years the swim classes have been a very popular event to keep the kids engaged and involved and to build camaraderie, which is very important. Now, I did share with the commissioners and Splash Five, if you only allocate 300,000 for the Grig Center, that has to be for improvements. You really don't see any capital improvement plans with $300,000. And I know that you guys have already had your meeting, your SDS discussions, service delivery, delivery strategy meetings. But I was shocked when this information came across my desk that there would not be a pool in the first phase of this project. And there was no clear answer about the second phase from the county as far as funding. And that's a, that really was a concern. So we want to make sure that the citizens realize that there's a good faith effort to move this project along and that we will have a pool added. The pool deserves a place in the community as well, I don't have to tell you guys that. The building, we could argue about what should be done with the building that's there over 50 years old, that's, some people believe that should be torn down and, you know, there's other things that have already been discussed that people will disagree with. But what would it mean to have a pool in the community? What it would mean? It would mean social interaction for the children. Pools increase safety for the community. You can create competition and camaraderie. You can even make a pool therapeutic to where a portion of the pool is for special needs. How can the governments also be able to make money from the pool? You could have public communities that swim, private parties, let people rent the pool, simple daily fees. Even summer passes. A pool with zero depth entry for the smaller kids. There's a lot of creative conversation that can be had as to why we need a pool. And I, and I also shared that we're gonna have three courts over at the Grig Center, but I've never seen people die from playing basketball, but I have seen kids die from not knowing how to swim. It's a safety issue also. And we always say safety first. We talk about school to prison pipeline, now we can talk about no pool to prison pipeline. Because as of right now, we got young kids, 11, 12, getting shot recently on the streets. We have to prepare for the summer and make sure that the kids have adequate activities to, to grow from and to keep them busy and productive. We, I want us to be more proactive instead of being reactive. I'm really shocked that at this point, the pool wasn't included. And based on history and years ago, when you promise something in another phase, it doesn't always happen, not in Tru County. So to have nearly 4,000 kids involved in an activity that just basically have been cut is an issue. Now, I know you guys are a partner, you're not technically leading this project, but you guys putting skin in the game. We would like to see the governments work together as I make my rounds to the governments and even the state legislators to see what we can do. Let's see what kind of grants we have out here to try to make this happen. Do we need to look at corporate sponsorship? Do we need to talk to kids? Do we need to talk to Durisale or some other companies? I mean, I would hope that we're all being creative and doing the best we can to provide a safe environment for the kids to come and learn how to swim and add value to their summers. I thank you, that's my spiel. And I'll give the floor to Mr. Roberts. Thank you.
How y'all doing today?
All right.
We thank y'all for allowing us to be here today. I want to speak from a community voice about the pool. When I first came down here, my mom, this is my mom's hometown, this was basically majority of my family. So when I came down, when I first come down here at a young age, the rec department was vibrant, full, life, everything was over there. I remember going over there as a small boy, learning how to get, swim, getting through in the pool and everything. Now here we are in 2022, 21? 22, I'm sorry. And the pool is not included in the remodeling of the rec center. From what we was told, that we don't have enough money for this pool, that we need two more million dollars to get this pool that was very important to the black community. A lot of kids learned how to swim over there, a lot of athletes came from over there, a lot of people gathered at the pool. When my daughter, Angel Roberts, was playing AU basketball over for the rec department and we used to invite other people in from other cities, big cities, like Atlanta, Augusta, South Carolina, North Carolina, we were in the tournament with a big pool party to show the people that we can enjoy life and that we can have fun. And they would enjoy that. And now here we are in the second remodeling stage of the rec. The first time, from what I was heard, that we supposed to have two full sized gym and a smaller gym. Well, we wind up with a full sized gym and only the smallest gym. Everything that was supposed to have been done the first time wasn't done, we were neglected. We didn't have a voice in it, we didn't have an opinion in it, it was done by delegates, our elected officials, those that have center boards, advisory boards and whatsoever. And now here we are, having the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Grig Center. And we feel, we feel cheated, we really feel cheated, we really feel disrespected that a building that is iconic in this community, in this city, for 50 years that have had that pool. And now they're talking about not giving us the pool. They're also talking about downsizing. If you go over there and look at the rec pool now, it's already small. And now you want to downsize it even smaller and then you want to put the depths four feet all the way across. The Daniel Center don't have that, they have a full sized pool. They have a deep sized pool, I think of maybe the 12 feet. And here we are that over in that community, that building is needed, that facility is needed. And it needs to be brought up to par, like every other facility that's around here, every other thing that's been remodeled and brand new, the upkeep, the upkeep of the city, that needs to happen over there as well. So we speak on behalf of the community from a community standpoint, not the dollar signs that we're saying that this got to be cut out, this got to be cut out, this can't be put in, we can't do the pool right now, we got to do the parking lot, which the parking lot is needed. But another sized gym is needed as well. But can't we somehow, some way, come up with the funds, the money to make sure this pool that has been over there over 50 years still remains? So we come to y'all for help. We know that y'all gave a million dollars, we asking for more help. We asking for people to understand the vision that is very important for these children because everybody don't play basketball, everybody don't play football. And it's sad to say, everybody don't be on the computer. Our kids already don't enjoy outside. We got obesity problems, our kids don't exercise, our kids are stuck up in the games, we have all this violence going on that we have took nature from our children. Let's dispose our children back to nature, thank you.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Manley and Mr. Roberts. I really, really feel your pain and I just concur with everything that you're saying. We have a representative from the council that's on the rec board, even though we're, we don't directly, as you know, we're not responsible for Parks and Rec, that's totally on the county. But I'm going to ask him and after he finishes, I'm going to ask our city manager, maybe both of them can enlighten you of some of the things that the city has done. And Mr. Mark Mitchell represents us on Parks and Rec's board.
I'll just tell you what I know is taking place from the last meeting that Mr. Roberts was at and he also spoke. And I think the Parks and Rec Board with Lance, the Parks and Rec Director, leading the discussion was that the total cost of the building in phase one had came in at 1.8 million dollars above contract. And that the county, which is ultimately responsible for this build and the maintenance and the maintaining of the facility, has agreed to make up that shortfall. So, and what I was understanding from the meeting is that the pool except, is itself is going to be included in phase two. And the Parks Director for the county is supportive of what you're wanting, they asked your group to go up to Noonan to look at their pool that they installed, they had the similar situation as this that has taken place. And there were some, when you look at the zero entry point, I think it was a four foot overall pool, which was not for diving but for learning how to swim. And, yep. Okay, so that was pretty much where we left it, that they were going to add the cost of the pool in Splash Two, which is coming up, when will that come up?
In three years.
But, yep. And the, the, the rec board didn't vote on anything, but it's, it's ultimately up to the county commissioners who is paying the bill. And I think everybody from the Parks and Rec Board was supportive of the pool going in, I think, I don't think there was any debate about whether it could be afforded right now or not. So, and that's pretty much the way the, the meeting went, so.
So we have a guarantee in the second phase, because they was told to us in the first phase that this pool was there, but after they started explaining everything, it was a, after they started explaining everything, the pool wasn't in the first phase because they was two million dollars short. But when they came over there, they explained to us that this five point million dollars that they had to use was to do the whole rec. That's how it was explained to us, to do everything we needed, the pool, the upgrade, the pipes, the roof, the siding. Until one gentleman asked for the breakdown of this, the second time he asked, after the breakdown came in, the pool was not even included in phase one, though it appears to be included in phase one. We were told, gonna need two million dollars. So then we was told about the spas, that's what, two years from now, three years from now? Then it was told us from the spas that that's if the money generates through that spas, that we would get that pool.
The spas will have to pass.
Right.
Vote first.
Right, exactly.
Okay, let, let us hear from our city manager, do you have anything?
I mean, I would just add that the city did allocate a million dollars of the ARCA funds that the city received from the federal government towards this project. We haven't allocated those at this point, but anticipate doing that in the near future. The county did approach the mayor and council some time ago with plans, were shared with the council, the council voted to allocate those funds to help that project along. As you know, this is not a city facility, so we don't participate in the management of this project, so I don't know a whole lot about the, Mr. Mitchell knows a lot more as he sits on the Parks and Rec Board than I do as to how they're phasing things and moving forward in the project. I will tell you that the city is taking great strides in parks. We're not in the recreation business, but we're very excited about McGregor Park, we've yet to name it, final name of what that park will be, but we're allocating great resources towards that, we're just finishing our linear park in front of the housing authority. So we anticipate a lot more work in your community as it relates to park development, so just want you to know we're committed to that.
And, and to that point, I want to say to you all that Mr. Gaskin and I both feel the same way and we're behind you and whatever we can do, I'm, I can't speak for him, but I'm pretty sure he's with me, whatever we can do to further get with the county and to see if they can do something, and I'm sure Mr. Mitchell as well. We want to see this happen, it's in District Two, and so certainly we want to see that happen and, and that whole, whole recreation center need to be brought up to speed. But I hope you understand with us that we don't regulate it, nor we, do we have any say so, we just try to give, give them our financial support. So I hope you all understand that. And, and, and from a councilman's perspective, representing District Two, representing District Two, we are all in and we're going to do our very best to talk to some of the other commissioners and Mr. Dr. McCamey as well, because he represents that, that area.
Okay. I, I trust that you guys would do what you can. I know you guys are not leading, stirring the projects, but you're kind of in the backseat kind of, you know, but we just want to make sure that all the entities are working together to try to get this done. We will, I've been in conversations with Eric Mosby and we're going to talk some more and see what options we have. I guess this was something technically that should have been seen some time ago, but hey, this is where we are now and we got to do the best that we can. I've seen counties scrap plans and start all over also, say, hey, all right, we got two courts, okay, we'll take away one of the courts, we'll do the gym. That's, I mean, I've seen it happen. So we are concerned about that and people who were at the meeting that spoke about the pool in the beginning, so why their voices got drowned it out, I don't know. Why some people didn't receive emails for the next meeting and, and there was a lot of communication glitches that happened. But we're going to continue to work with the, with the county and, and I'm dying to hear, does any, are you very familiar with Mr. Shoemake's plan? Because I'm not yet, we're gonna meet, but where are the kids gonna go, third grade on up to learn how to swim?
They have not discussed that with me at a meeting, so I'm not familiar with what you're talking about.
Okay, but that, that is some discussions that are in the works. But last but not least, I remember growing up, my dad's family grew up next door to LaGrig, matter of fact, that's why I spent a lot of time between there and my mother's family in Marywood County. I remember taking a cousin to, two cousins to swim classes, my aunt's children. One of those cousins became a lifeguard and contributed time to the rec before going on Auburn. That cousin is here today. I would like for him to take two minutes to share his thoughts and his passion for the pool, Eric Portress.
I'd like to first say thank you, Mr. Manley, for putting me on the spot.
I really appreciate that.
How are you all doing?
Harry.
Well, I do have a lot of passion for that pool and having a pool in the community. But I'm not speaking just for the history and the past and my experiences, I'm speaking for the kids of the future. These students of Marywood, of Greenville are not, and I'm sorry, not Greenville, that's why I work, LaGrange. It's hard, hard to get those kids off my mind, but of LaGrange, because I'm a teacher at Greenville High School. They don't have any type of recreation. When I look at our city, we're doing well compared to some of these other counties. When I look at the facilities that have come along, beautiful, and I've been very appreciative of it. I took my son over to the Grig Center, to the pool, and I taught him how to swim. I took my youngest son to the pool and I taught him how to swim. I taught him how to protect themselves in the water, how to stay alive in the water. We're taking that away from our kids. We're taking that opportunity and those chances of learning how to swim away from kids of this community. There are ways around getting a project done and adding a pool at the same time. We know that. We know that. We know that. Everybody in here is bright-minded. When there's a will, there's a way. When you want to accomplish something, we get it done. I saved a lot of lives in the pool. Kids learned how to swim. We say that we're worried about endangering the kids, pool not being too deep. How's a child supposed to learn how to tread water in a four-foot pool? But then, that child's going to go on and be a swimmer at Troop High School, LaGrange High School? They have to have a place to learn. They have to have a stepping stone. They have to have a start. We're taking that smart, start away from. I don't think anybody in here would want their kids in a pool swimming or in a pool period, and they don't know how to swim. Do you know how much water it takes to drown? Anybody? Take it for me.
Uh, Mr. Portress?
Yes.
We need to wrap this up.
Okay.
But I appreciate your coming, and we really do appreciate all the, uh, input that you all have given us. And again, we, we don't operate the pool, uh, nor the rec, but we are behind you. We're going to try to do everything we can. We appreciate you all so much.
All right. Well, I appreciate anything that you all can do to get this done.
Yes, sir.
Because it's a need, not a want.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Thank all of you. Now let us go to, uh, Chief Deckmar.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Prokam. I'd ask Officer Everhart to join us and Mr. Walker. Uh, last month, Officer Everhart responded to an accident with a rolled-over truck. And as she arrived, Mr. Walker was, uh, had, uh, personal harm to himself, um, was retrieving two folks that were trapped inside of an overturned truck. And as a result, incurred some injuries, was treated there at the scene, and stayed on the scene until, uh, he was sure he could render no more assistance. And so I'd like to do on behalf of the police department is present this. If you wouldn't, Mr. Walker? It's a certificate appreciation to John Walker in recognition of your selfless acts at the scene of a motor vehicle crash on February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, where you put yourself in harm's way to provide aid to another. Your actions reflect the highest tradition of a citizenship. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to ask you a few questions. Mr. Walker, are you from LaGrange?
I'm, I'm a UPS driver down in LaGrange.
Are you really?
But I'm from Topps County, but I run a route in West Point.
All right. We should get ready to move to LaGrange. You've got some housing.
I'm staying in LaGrange now. I got a house in LaGrange.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
We need more people like you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
That was a good thing.
All right.
All right. Now we're going to go to, uh, uh, city, um, council, uh, reports. Are there any reports?
No report here.
No report.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
I do have a report.
Okay.
I'd like to take this time to thank everyone, everyone that came forward to discuss the pool. Um, historically, I, I think that the county has had a lot of time to mull over this situation. Um, water is nothing new to the county. West Point Lake has five hundred and twenty-five square, five hundred and twenty-five miles of shoreline, forty square miles of water. And historically, if you look back since it was flooded back in nineteen seventy-one, I think, seventy-two, the county has failed to launch in taking an interest in water. You don't have the amenities like Lake Lanier. You have the boaters out there. You got guys that go out there and they fish. And, and I don't want to talk bad about the county, because I think it's more than just a reflection of the county. I think it's a reflection of the citizens. The Lord giveth and the Lord taketh. We are blessed to have water here, and we need to know how to swim in it. We are blessed to have West Point Lake. But I'd like to have a T-shirt that says West Point Lake. I'd like to have a beach towel. I'd like to have a shot glass. But we act like this thing ain't even here, like we don't even want it, like it's a toilet bowl for Atlanta. And that's the way we treat it. So historically, when you think about how the lake is looked at, and then you're like screaming about this pole, I, I feel your frustration. The passion isn't there in the community. West Point Lake is filthy, filthy. Our creeks in this county, in, in our own city are filthy. We do not care about water as a community. The only time we care is when we get that built. Then we care. But like I said, the Lord giveth and the Lord taketh. We need to learn how to manage what we have the best way we can and be innovative, be creative, and be appreciative of that opportunity. And I thank you guys for your passion, and I thank this council for caring. That's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaskin. Uh, city manager report.
Uh, just a few tonight, Mayor Prokam. The financial statements, as well as the payment of bills over two thousand dollars are attached to your agenda materials. Don't have any particular comments at this time. We look forward to a lengthy review of these in the coming months. Um, we also, be glad to answer any questions, I'm sorry, that y'all might have about the panel.
Any questions for city manager?
No, ma'am.
Um, this morning, we, um, had a delegation from LaGrange College, their servant scholars program, and they came to talk to council about Calumet Park, um, and some new amenities that they would like to add, um, those including a large grill, fruit trees, and a learning trail. Uh, they asked for some, um, funding to help move along with this project in the amount of two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. If it's the council's pleasure, we can move forward with this. There'll be some in-kind work from the city to help, um, with planting and some other things as we move forward with this, if council says.
I'd like to make a motion if we move forward on that.
With, with the city manager kind of being in, in charge.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
All in favor, I don't know if I say aye? Pose by the same sign. So, Karen.
That concludes my report.
Thank you so very much. Thanks so very much. Before we go to the first reading, I think, uh, it's our hand.
Yes, sir. I want to know how I can speak at once.
Come to the mic.
How y'all doing today?
All right.
Good, good, good. Thank y'all for letting me get a chance to speak. I also have lived in this county all my life, forty-six years. Hey, I'm sorry. My name's Theron Truitt. I'm from LaGrange, Georgia, born and raised, forty-six years. I also learned how to swim at the, uh, recreational center right down Ogle Tree Street. So I do think y'all should do everything you can to help. But that's not what I came for. Today I came for to let y'all know about me and my business. I started a business on East Depot Street with all the right intentions in the world. What I have is an event center, and what I do is allow people to come in, perform as an entertainer for the community. And I've had several people from some of the best names come through. We also do teen night, teen night for kids. Give them somewhere to do, go after school. And we also allow the parents to come in, chaperone and everything. And we're just constantly, constantly getting harassed by the LaGrange Police Department. It's like, if you know the area, there's no traffic in that area during the day, more or less at night. So the trains park on the track, they block the tracks. You got the drug team, they'll go up there, turn around behind the people. You got working parents coming to pick up the kids for teen night. They turn the lights on. They threaten them with tickets. They threatening us with tickets. They park... I, I'm the only resident that lives on Rome Avenue. It's the only house on Rome Avenue. If someone blocks that street, they want to give them a ticket. But every other day, it's a police officer blocking that street. And it's to the point where it's, it seems like they're just aiming directly at the business. They'll park up the street, turn the lights on, and say, well, we getting complaints about parking. There is no traffic, no traffic, zero traffic. They told me Saturday night that someone from Miami can ride through there, call in and say, hey, uh, I couldn't get through this street, and they're going to come over and shut your business down. It's like they just constantly, constantly harassing me, and they're constantly parking in our area. And they don't understand that their blue lights have a whole lot of significant value. It provides fear, and anybody that's not a police officer from that area, because whether they're doing wrong or right, blue lights mean police. So once they are talking to the police and they're asking these people to move, it's something said that's not light, and then they go to threatening to lock people up.
I will stop you right there just a second, because I've, I've been a police officer and state trooper for thirty years, and for somebody to say that they're afraid because they see blue lights, there's something else going on.
Well, sir, I understand where you're coming from, but I disagree.
Well, are we going to disagree to disagree? You're not on the agenda to speak anyway.
But I asked to speak, and they allowed me to speak. So are you going... When can I speak? How can I get on the agenda?
Just, just a second.
He's not going to let me talk.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm the one chairing the meeting. I allowed you to come up, but, uh, I didn't know what you really wanted right now. But the problem that you have right now need to be addressed to the chief. He just left. If you can speak with the chief and get with him...
He won't talk to me. He told me once, I asked for police help, he said the police cannot help me at my business because I would be endangering the policeman's lives.
I want to speak to the city manager.
You have a city manager right there.
I want to speak to the city manager.
Okay.
Mr. Manager, could you have the chief provide us with the call records?
Yes.
To this location that he's talking about at our next work session?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And Mr. Truitt, if you would, give the city manager, she can get that, have that conversation with the chief. She hires the chief, so she has a, she has a conversation.
I also, I also have something else to say about that also. No one wants to listen to me. I'm coming to you guys as a business owner. I know all these things. I've, I was, I had to go downtown to the city building to show my license, because the city manager said I didn't have license. She's been working with the chief. They won't talk to me. Councilman Gaskin was in the meeting. He was in the meeting. I got all this stuff documented, recorded, everything. I'm tired. The people that are coming to my place are tired. It's like, we got to fight to have a good time. And I want to be heard, and if it, if it's not today, please put me on the agenda.
If, if what we could do, we can, uh, we can put you on the agenda if you would get with, uh, Ms., uh...
Kelsey.
Kelsey. She can put you on the agenda for the next meeting.
Do I need to bring a hundred witnesses?
No, no. You just, you get with her.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. All right. Uh, closing comment.
Uh, Mr. Mayor Prokam, we got a first reading.
Oh, I'm so sorry. So sorry.
Yes, sir.
Y'all got me thrown off. Uh, first reading of, uh, modifying speed limits on certain city streets.
In ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city to modify the lawful speed limits on certain city streets to conform to DOT recommendations, to repeal conflicting ordinances, fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
All right. Uh, no second readings, uh, closing comments. Katie, thank you.
Yes. Um, for our good news tonight, we want to remind everyone, tomorrow morning at ten o'clock, Sweetland Amphitheater will be announcing the first five concerts. Of course, we have a lot more to come. Um, we'll announce them on social media, website, sweetlandamp.com, and a media release that'll come out at ten AM. And the city of LaGrange, we are very excited to welcome the Atlanta Braves World Champions Trophy Tour Saturday, August sixth, three to six PM. This is going to be a free event to the whole community. Um, I personally reached out to many of the other different communities, like West Point, Hugginsville, Troop County, and that will be, um, a part of their big, um, one-hundred-fifty-one-stop tour. So we're very excited about that.
Okay. Thank you. I'll be in status adjourned.